Now we'll move on to public hearing, item A. City Clerk?
Item 6A, hold a public hearing to waive the first reading and introduce an ordinance to approve a second amendment to a previously approved 1996 development agreement for a portion of land commonly known as Bay Hill 8. Adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement regarding subsurface improvements in the right-of-way.
Okay, thank you. We're gonna have, I think, a couple speakers. The city manager, did you want to start, or are we gonna turn it over Ms. Wu?
Sure. Members of the city council and the public, I'll introduce Pamela Wu, who is our acting community and economic development director. She will provide this presentation with Kelly Biggs, a contract senior planner for the city of San Bruno that is working on this project. This is a development agreement extension for what is commonly referred to as 901 Cherry Phase 2, but the two properties have an address now, and it is 1414-50 Bay Hill Drive. And with that, I will turn it over to Pamela Wu and Kelly Biggs. In addition, you have myself, the city attorney, the public works director, and a number of other people within the community and economic development department that have worked on this and that are here to answer any questions that you may have. Pamela?
Thank you, Jovan. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of the city council. My name is Pamela Wu. I'm the acting director for the community and economic development department. I have the pleasure to present the item before you tonight. Next slide, please. With me today is myself, the team that's been working on this item, city attorney, the outside attorney, Edward Schaefer, who's representing the city in this matter, and also Kelly Biggs, contract senior planner. With that, I'll turn the presentation to Kelly to walk you through with the remainder of the presentation. Kelly?
Good evening, everyone. The objective of tonight's meeting is to consider waiving the first reading and introducing an ordinance to approve the proposed second amendment to the existing development agreement for Bay Hill 8, which, as Jovan mentioned, is the property at 1414-50 Bay Hill Drive and 901 Cherry Avenue. Secondly, the item, the objective is to consider adopting a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement regarding subsurface improvements in the right-of-way. I'll note that the ordinance is located on page 133 of your packet tonight, the DA amendment on page 137, and the resolution on page 229. So this is the agenda for my presentation. I'll start off with some background, move on to the second amendment, the development agreement overview, a resolution overview, summarizing the October 20th, 2020 Planning Commission meeting, and then move on to tonight's actions and take any questions from council. So to start off with some project background, I'd just like to start with some very broad background on the item. The item before you tonight is an amendment to a development agreement. So broadly speaking, a development agreement is a voluntary contract between a local jurisdiction and a local property owner. It details obligations of both parties and specifies standards and conditions that will govern the development of the property. It locks in current land use regulations for a set time and can also be used to negotiate benefits for both sides. This does run with the land, and as you can see, the portion of land that we're talking about is located on the map in the lower right-hand corner of your screen. It's behind the Bay Hill Shopping Center with 380 running to the north and 280 running to the west. The site ownership has changed over time. Before 1997, it was owned by the Gap, then in 1997 transferred to GPS Management Services, and then in 2019 was purchased by Google. So the first development agreement for this piece of land began in 1996, when the city of San Bruno and the Gap entered into a development agreement for development of the property at 901 Cherry Avenue, which you can see marked as Phase 1 here, and 1414-50 Bay Hill Drive marked as Phase 2 here. The original project included the office building at 901 Cherry Avenue and parking deck, buildings located here, the parking deck is here, that were developed as the Gap corporate headquarters. The development agreement also included one additional office building and a parking garage at 1414-50 Bay Hill Drive, which is the Phase 2 site, and that's located to the west of 901 Cherry Avenue here. As you can see, the Phase 2 site is vacant. The first amendment to the DA was undertaken in 1999, and this was to add office space to the area shown as Building 3 here. This was originally conceived as only a parking deck. The first amendment to the DA was approved on August 9th, 1999, along with an architectural review permit, a planned development permit amendment. The amended 1999 development agreement authorizes the construction of two new office buildings instead of just the one. Building 2, located here, is a 170,885 square foot three-story building, and Building 3, located here, is a 116,000 square foot two-story building, and there's a parking garage located partially below grade there, and that would be accessed from a new access driveway at Bay Hill Drive. This first amendment to the development agreement did not involve any extension of the term, and this development agreement currently expires on February 25th, 2021. So moving on to tonight's business, I will summarize the contents of the second amendment to the DA. So unlike the first amendment, the second amendment is not being undertaken to permit changes to the development design or the program. The primary contents of the DA amendment include the extension of the expiration date and term of the development agreement from that February 25th, 2021 date to August 31st, 2021. And while the first amendment that revised the Phase 2 plan was approved in 1999, Google only bought the property in 2019, and they have been working steadily since then to develop Phase 2. Google's requesting this extension in part to delays caused by the COVID-19 pandemic in addition to other factors. The second amendment to the DA also outlines that in consideration of the expiration date extension and other items in the second amendment, Google has agreed to pay a total of $4.5 million as a public benefit payment to the city's general fund, and that would occur on or before February 26, 2021. The city art fee program, as outlined in Chapter 3.4, will apply to the project. Fees for soil nails and tiebacks will apply. The parking in lieu fee is applicable to the project as it's located in a specific plan area. And lastly, the second amendment will establish alternative vesting rights. So the rights of the DA will vest when physical site work under the mass excavation and shore permit have commenced, and at least 30% of the total soil volume specified in that permit has been excavated. And I'll just note that typically those rights vest at vertical construction. Moving on to the environmental review that's been conducted for the proposed project. As noted in the staff report, two environmental documents have been prepared for the project. The first is the 1996 EIR, which was prepared for that original project, and then an addendum to that project, which was prepared for the revised Phase 2 project. As I've mentioned, the plans that the developer intends to develop are consistent with those approved in 1999, so therefore the project intensity and land uses have not been altered by the second amendment to the development agreement. The city council is asked to make a finding that no new significant or more severe impacts will be caused to require further environmental analysis, and that finding is included in the ordinance. Moving on to the resolution. Oops, sorry. So this resolution is included as Attachment 6 to the staff report. It authorizes the city manager to execute an agreement regarding subsurface improvements in the right-of-way. This agreement will allow some of the project's foundation system components installed for construction purposes to remain within the public right-of-way and public easements. These elements are required for temporary shoring of the excavated area for the Building 3 subterranean garage, and the reason that the developer can't internally shore that area is that it would impede construction of the garage itself for you to internally shore that excavated area. It is $1,000 per soil nail or tieback in the city right-of-way, and that fee is imposed to compensate the city for potential cause to remove those soil nails or tiebacks. Moving on to a summary of the October 20th Planning Commission meetings. The Planning Commission discussed the project's environmental review, which, as described earlier, does not require further analysis to the project's consistency with the 1999 plans and the existence of those previous environmental documents. They discussed hall trips and traffic related to the excavation of the garage and the building foundations, and the applicant would be required to use city-designated hall routes and also to complete pre-imposed surveys of roads to ensure that the roads have not been damaged due to project construction. There was public comment on the technicality of the subject matter, as well as making housing a priority in San Bruno. The Planning Commission did adopt a resolution recommending city council approval. So this slide presents tonight's action. I'm available to answer any questions that you have, along with our city attorney and outside counsel, and the applicant is also in attendance. Moving on to the next steps, a second reading and adoption of the ordinance will occur at a subsequent city council meeting, and the ordinance will go into effect 30 days after the second reading. All right?
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, this is a public hearing, so what I'd like to do is first go ahead and see if there's any members of the public that did want to speak on this item. If you do, if you could raise your virtual hand, and the city clerk will call you in. I do see that we have someone?
Yes, Malcolm Robinson, just one moment.
Thank you.
Hi, Malcolm, whenever you're ready.
Okay, a couple years ago, at August Night Out, I was talking to Councilwoman O'Connor, and there was conversation about getting Google and Walmart and YouTube and all these guys with big deep pockets to help fund a new library in San Bruno. I know earlier we were talking about the beautiful rec center pool and community hall being created, and one of the competing projects was a library. And the discussion turned to, well, maybe we could get these deep pockets to help us build a world-class, you know, modern library. Is there any discussion of that? Where did those discussions go? And I'd like an answer for this one, please. Thank you.
Thank you, Malcolm, for your comments. Is there anybody else from the public at this time?
I'm seeing no other hands raised.
Okay, this is a public hearing, therefore if I do close the public hearing by action of council, the public will not be permitted to comment again. Seeing no additional hands, can I have action from council, please?
Move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion made in second to close public hearing. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Five-oh voice vote. Turning it back to the council, there was one comment that was raised. Is there anybody on staff that wants to discuss that or bring that up? And then I want to see if the applicant had anything that they wanted to also add after, in general. City Manager?
Sure. Mayor, members of the council, the question from the member of the public referenced a community meeting or vision meeting that I believe occurred over two and a half years ago at the, I believe was actually at the recreation center, and I believe that those were the visiting sessions around when the city was due to receive approximately $50,000, $50 million from the San Bruno Community Foundation, and there were lots of discussions on should that money be used for a library or a new aquatic and recreation center for various reasons. There was robust community engagement. The decision was to use those funds for a new aquatic and recreation center. If my memory is correct and reading the notes, there were also conversations at that time about asking large entities in the community to help with that budget and to help fund the effort either for a library or for a new aquatic and recreation center. As the city council knows, the city council adopted development impact fees within development impact fees. There are categories for community facilities. The library and the recreation, our recreation facilities are within those development impact fees. In addition, as a part of the Bay Hill specific plan and as a part of the action that is before you tonight, there are community benefits. And so those community benefits dollars, and there is $4.5 million worth of community benefits in the DA extension that is before you tonight, can be applied toward a large community facility, and that decision will be up to the city council at a subsequent date. And so I do believe that those broad conversations have played out in reality, and tonight's action is a manifestation of that in the $4.5 million in community benefits that's in the action tonight. In addition, council will remember that in July of this year, there was a study session with regard to the Bay Hill specific plan and direction to include a formulate community benefit model for commercial properties that is $35 per square foot. Several million dollars of community benefits that will come to this community once that plan is approved and then development happens over the next five, 10, 15 years.
Okay, thank you. And then also, we do have our community/business partners that are also on the line, and I wanted to see if they wanted an opportunity to speak on the project at all, because if not, then I will move it back to council for questions. Seeing none at this time, we'll go ahead and bring it to council for discussion. Seeing no virtual hands from city council, or physical hands. Councilmember Medina, then councilmember Mason.
Great, Mayor Medina. Mayor Medina, I had a little trouble with that last name, sorry about that. Happens sometimes. First of all, thank everyone for this report. I understand this has taken a lot of effort and a lot of hours, and here we are, looking at entering a development agreement for a new, a new big building during a pandemic. So I think this also signifies how San Bruno is a place to be, to grow, and with that said, I have a few questions. Just wanted a little more clarity on the city art fee and how that plays out for myself and the public. Also about the parking requirements. At this point, there are supposed to be 865 parking spaces, and how is that adjusted? And who approves that? And what fees are associated with? And a range, because the range of fees, I understand that as they're building and putting the drawings together, that there'll be some movement on that number. And my last question is, understandably, the environmental impact for this property is not significantly changing, but my concern is the traffic that is generated from this project and how it cascades down to the rest of our community as we're going to be developing the transit corridor plan in Mills Park and the Bay Hill specific plan. So where does this additional traffic get inputted to the traffic studies that have already been completed? And I'll stop there with those three things.
Do you have further questions before we turn it over to staff, or just those three?
That's the three that I have for now.
Okay. So does staff want to address some of the questions? Like councilmember Medina?
Sure. Jovan Rogan, city manager, through the mayor. Why don't we take those beginning with the latter and then go to the former? And so the last question was around the economic, or I'm sorry, the environmental impact of traffic and how that will be incorporated into future traffic sets. And so why don't I turn it over to Pamela Wu, our acting community and economic development director, to talk about the environmental impact report that this DA in development is tearing off of first, and then talk about how future traffic analysis will incorporate the traffic that is generated by this project if the project is both approved and/or developed by the time those subsequent projects happen.
Right. Honorable Mayor, so the project traffic analysis has been adequately reviewed in the 1999 draft EIR, the final EIR, when it was prepared and approved by council. So the staff has also reviewed a conformance review proposed by Google not too long ago. The staff determination is that the current proposal is similar and substantial in conformance with the original approval, therefore the traffic mitigation has been adequately addressed through a 1999 environmental document. That's kind of the short answer to a long story. I'll actually turn it over to Kelly. She has the technicality of exactly why we're not asking for any report.
Sure, so we don't ask for a new report because there's been no increase in square footage or intensity of the use, and those are the items that would require a new traffic report. In terms of your question about kind of future documentation, any general plan update would take this development into account and the current traffic conditions to analyze existing conditions, and then that would be added to whatever future plans that you have. And we are under VMT now, so that's not entirely under CEQA, but you are still allowed to do it to determine general plan consistency.
And I do want to add that additional traffic that will be analyzed due to Bay Hill specific plan will be mitigated through that new EIR.
Right. I just was making sure that, and I totally understand how there is no additional environmental review needed, I just wanted to hear when this additional traffic from this project, where does that get added to these future traffic studies and mitigation of the Bay Hill specific plan? You answered my question, so thank you for that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And then we had the two other items, which was in regards to the parking and the art.
Sure. Why don't I start with that one, but I may toss that to staff as well. So I think it's important for the community as a reminder that in 2019, the city council directed staff to look at our parking requirements and amend the city's parking ordinances. That work was done, and actually just before COVID-19 and the shelter in place, your very last regular meeting where you were meeting in person, I think that was the last meeting in February, is when the second reading of those new parking standards took place. What it provided was an in lieu fee program for various areas in the city. In particular, for this development, there is a parking in lieu fee of $60,000 per space, and developments can use up to 30% of their, of the development's parking for the in lieu fee program. The ordinance provides for the approval body to be the community and economic development director or the approval body for the entitlement of the project or permit. The DA that is before you clarifies that any in lieu request will have, that the approval will be the community and economic development director. With regard to your question of exactly how many spaces the applicant will propose, staff does not know the answer to that at this time, but they are allowed to fee out for the full amount under the city's ordinance that was passed in February of this year, which is 30% of the parking spaces. Now, there will be a technical review of that, and it's not a, as we talked about when that ordinance was passed, it is not a fait accompli. It is, it is a discretionary decision that may or may not be granted if requested. Staff, is there anything additional that you want to chime in that I may have left off?
I think that's all right. I think just the intent from the plans, the preliminary plans that we've reviewed, all parking spaces are being provided on-site. I think the intent in including that is to provide flexibility for a minor amount of spaces in case there's some loss during development of construction documents.
Okay. Mr. Mayor? So up to 260 parking spaces could be paid through the parking lieu fee, and I understand that they will be working on the plans, and there is no set number currently at this time, but it's anticipated that the majority of the parking will be provided? Is that accurate?
That is correct, yes.
Okay. Two nots and a yes. And then finally, from the councilmember, the art.
So the question was an explanation of how the city art fee program will work. So why don't I interpret that a little broadly, and we'll talk about it. So there is a requirement to pay the city art fee. What the city's ordinance allows is the ability for the fee to be paid into the city art fund, and then there's a process outlined in the municipal code if there's to be onsite city art provided on-site. And so the DA clarifies that the developer at their, will follow our ordinance, municipal code 3.40.070, and comply with that ordinance, either paying the art fee or providing it on-site. If the art, if the public art is provided on-site, there is a process where that onsite art is first reviewed by the Public Art Commission. It then goes to the Planning Commission for approval, and then can also be called up by any member of the city council to be reviewed by the city council. So the city council is in effect the ultimate decider of any onsite art request by virtue of the ability to call up a decision of the Public Art Commission or the Planning Commission if the developer decides to provide onsite art.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, councilmember.
Okay, so basically, the owner decides, hey, we want to go ahead and provide some of that art on-site, so they propose it, it goes to the Culture and Arts Commission, and then it rolls through, so there is a public process, and at any time during that process, the council could step in and say, hey, we want to hear this. Is that correct?
Yes, although not at any time, but upon the decision of the Public Art Committee or the Planning Commission.
Got it. It just would be interesting that, I'll just say it, that up in that area, or even better yet, San Bruno needs art throughout our city that's readily accessible to the public, and I public and I hope that it winds up being out, out within the public, not more so in a, a business park. It's kind of set away up, up where that location is, but I look forward to, to hearing what's going to happen with this. But thank you. Those are, you've answered my questions.
Councilmember Mason.
Hey, thank you. So, just adding, I think, the questions that Councilmember Medina just posed, my question is really, I understand the process as far as the 3.40.070, once an item is kind of ready, I guess, to be brought before the approval process, but the current code essentially says that the D A is one of the, one of the ways that you can meet your requirement under Code Section 3.40.040. And so, when I'm looking at the D A, it says here that when ordinarily due under city procedures, developer may propose to receive credit for art provided within the property, which city in its discretion may approve pursuant to the procedures and criteria described in Code Chapter 3.40. So, essentially by approving the D A, we're allowing the developer to get credit upon the city's discretion. So, I'm just wondering if that's something we can take out at this point, because it seems like the only way that it's allowed is by our approval tonight. Pursuant to Councilmember Medina's comment, we don't have a lot of art in San Bruno. It would be really great to see a contribution made to the city art fund and go from there.
City Manager?
Sure, Councilmember Mason, I'm going to turn this over to the city attorney because our reading of the code and the D A is slightly different from the understanding that you articulated. So, I'll toss it to City Attorney Mark Zacharano.
Okay, thank you.
City Attorney, please.
Sure, so, Section 3.40 does have a section in it that at least implies that there might be art on private property as opposed to in, in public spaces. And so, that's in 0.070 C1, where it says that the development project is subject to planning commission review and approval and includes onsite placement of artwork. So, I guess our interpretation, my interpretation of code is that it's certainly not prohibited by the code and it's, it's sort of explicitly mentioned that there might be a project that contemplates the placement of artwork on private property. So, it's not the development agreement that is providing that option really to, to the, to the developer. We think the developer could propose it anyway and just like in the D A, would be subject to requirements of the code. So, it goes to Culture and Arts Commission and then it would go to the Planning Commission, could be called up by the city council. So, that is the public process that's both in the code and is currently existing in the development agreement.
Okay, and if I may, I'm looking at 3.40.050, where it says in the absence of a development agreement or other similar agreement providing for public art or an art fund fee, the program allocation shall be as follows, and then it lets you know how much needs to be allocated to the fund. So, in the absence of the D A, then there would be a contribution. So, I'm seeing it as this is the opportunity right now to identify really the city's preference as far as whether we want, we would like to see a contribution or in financially or just as art versus the even possibility of proposing to receive credit for art provided within the property.
City Attorney?
So, the only comment I would offer about that, there's certainly a policy decision for the city council to be made, but I think Section 050, which is entitled Program Allocation, really doesn't refer to what kind of art or where the art is or whether art is provided or an in lieu fee is provided. What it refers to is that if there isn't a fee that's provided, it's, here's how it's allocated. So, I guess I don't see that as necessarily changing the ability of a developer in the absence of a development agreement to propose onsite placement of art on private property, because that's covered in Section 0.070. So, I don't think those two sections really are talking about the same thing. Certainly a council decision as to how they want to, how they want to treat this.
Yeah, and I think that's what I'm really trying to get at, is that this is, that this is a council decision. And my preference would be that they are, be, that there not be a credit receipt for art provided on the property. I think that obviously we need a majority of the council to make that decision, but I do think that we are in need of art here in San Bruno. Anytime, if you just Google San Bruno art, there's very little to look for or look at. And that would be one thing I'd like to request. And then my second question is in regards to the parking. I do recall the February meeting that City Manager Grogan referred to and regarding the parking, and this, this was my concern then as well, is the idea of paying the in lieu fees for less parking. And so, I understand that the discretion does belong to the city administration, but my question specific to that is if we're talking about a huge loss from 865 units and we can define huge however you'd like, but will the city council be advised? Will there be some kind of an informational session? Will there be an item on the agenda? And I, and I would imagine that now would be the time to request that because based on my read, it's not required. It's a, it's a discretion, it's at the discretion of the, I believe it's Economic Development Director.
City Attorney, do you have any comment?
Mr. Mayor?
City Manager?
Sure, let me take that. So, I think at the heart of Councilmember Mason's statement is whether the discretion is placed with professional staff or the city council. And at the end of the day, that's a policy decision of the city council. What I would say is that our ordinances articulate that and the place to change that would be to change the ordinance, because when we have development, developers look at our policies and our resolutions and our ordinances that have been adopted through public process and we typically do not want to change those for a specific development. What we want to do is to change it in our code and say how it will work overall for everyone. In addition, I think the difference between having a decision of the council or having a decision that is provided to your professional staff, staff is actually pretty stark and you can't muddle them by saying it's a staff decision, but before staff makes a decision, we want to have a study session so the council can opine. It's sort of either one or the other. And that's a policy decision of the city council. But if a decision is charged with the professional staff, be it the director, the city manager, or any, or any other staff member, there's not a process to go to council to check in on that potential decision. There, because then it's essentially a council decision. And so, if you want to make that policy decision, I would say make that policy decision. And back to the first comment is those policy decisions are best made when you adopt your codes and ordinances, not when individual projects come before you.
So, based on the, on the D A, it's on Section 5, it does, I mean, and this is in the February report too, but the Community and Economic Development Director has the authority and discretion under the code to approve the reduction, the number of parking spaces onsite. So, I'm not disagreeing with the, what you just said and City Attorney and I spoke before this meeting. I just want to make sure this conversation is public for purposes of obviously the D A, but I think really what I'm asking is, this is not your, when we, when this came to the council, there were different variations of it. There was parking requirements that we wanted waived for small mom and pop businesses. There were a number of benefits to the community that came with, with this policy change. And one of the concerns was that parking nowadays costs over $60,000 per space, right? Depending on, on where you're building it. And so, if you pay out the in lieu fee and it's in some, someday the city needs parking, we're going to have to pay that out of, out of our fund in some way. And so, if there's going to be a reduction, that's going to be great. It's not really so much of a request to approve it that I'm requesting, it's more of a, hey, here, we're getting a request to reduce the 865 spaces by 30%, which would be quite substantial. And I want to be clear, that is not being requested at this time, but that the city council be informed that that request is being made.
Okay, and then I see Mr. Schaefer also, impatient, but I saw your, your hand go up. Do you want to find on something here, sir?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to clarify that that section is in the Development Agreement Amendment regarding the parking fee, I'm sorry, regarding the art fee, to make sure the city got that fee. It was part of the negotiation of this document where the property owner had beliefs that they were exempt from some city fees because of the older development agreement being in effect, and we negotiated to make sure that they acknowledged that they would be obligated to pay the art fee. How it's treated later on, we left to the city's procedure, whether it would be paid in full or would be partly offset by art that was located on the property.
Thank you for some of that information.
Thank you.
Anything else, Councilmember Mason, at this time?
Oh, yeah, I mean, I think as far as the art fee, if we can go back to Attorney Schaefer, is there a way, Attorney Schaefer, that we can make sure that that come back to the council? If there's a proposal to receive credit for art provided within the, within the property? I know Attorney Deffrono has said that it's a policy decision that the council can make.
Right, well, as, as, as the city attorney said, the, the city code describes how it goes to the Art and Culture Commission and they make, they make decisions, it may go to the Planning Commission if there's an underlying discretionary approval tied to it, and the city council has the authority to call it up for review and approval. So, I mean, that's what the city code says, the Development Agreement simply says the code will be implemented in that regard. It doesn't delegate to the director or anyone else.
Okay. Okay, as far as the city art, that answers my questions. And then for the parking, I would like to go back to whether the city council would be informed of a request for a parking reduction, understanding that that is not currently part of the, the policy, but concerned that there will be a request that will impact communities surrounding the development.
Sure, so, absolutely. Staff totally understands that this is a very significant development and the council would like to be informed of a request, and so we would certainly, of course, inform you. I want to clarify a point that was made earlier though. The preliminary plans that have been submitted does not show a request for a parking reduction. In fact, it shows that they're meeting the parking reductions, I'm sorry, they're meeting the parking requirements. The conversations that staff have had with the owner of the project have been about minor reductions to those parking requirements once the final plans are submitted. And so, there have currently been no discussions at all about anywhere close to the maximum that's allowed in the code, which is 30% of the required parking spaces. But I should also be clear that what the D A and the code says is that the Community and Economic, that, that the power to approve any in lieu fees is vested with the Community and Economic Development Director. Upon council's approval, while we will inform if there's ever a request and approval, what will be controlling is the D A that council approves, and so it will only be informational. If council would like to retain that control, then you would essentially be vesting that responsibility to the city council and that's a different process. But what I hear is a request to be informed of it and the answer to that is absolutely.
Right, understood, thank you.
Any other questions from colleagues? Or?
Through the chair?
Oh, I was thinking, is Marty waving? Vice Mayor Salazar?
Good night to everybody.
Thank you. Yeah, I had questions around the parking waiver as well, but I think it was, it was pretty well answered. And I actually, I was, I was wondering if there had been a request from the owners in terms of reducing the parking. It sounds like that's not the case, so we're just truing up with some of the other agreements that are on, on record. So, being that this original agreement goes back 25 years, it's, it's great that we were able to salvage as much of it as we have, with only a few minor things and still managed to get quite a bit of community benefit out of it. So, I think that speaks volumes to our staff and the collaboration we have with, with the owners. So, you know, good job all the way around on that. You know, I did have some concerns around the, you know, the E I R being as old as it is and, you know, just basically rolling it forward. It sounds like everything's being addressed. I did have a question if the, the current E I R that's being done for the larger Bay Hill project, I'm pretty sure it overlaps this area and I'm wondering if there's any changes that will come out of when that process is finalized and if will, will it have any effects that will, or will it affect this project in any way if we uncover other things based on that E I R, E I R which is already in process?
I can answer that. Through the mayor. The current E I R that's been prepared for the specific plan has already taken this into consideration, so there will be no further complication based on what your action tonight.
Okay, perfect, perfect. Okay, yeah, other than that, I don't have any other real questions about what's being proposed. Well, actually, no, I take that back. I did have some questions around the, the request for the, what do they call, the nails that are being used for the retaining of the soil? And there wasn't really a lot of detail in the packet in terms of where those retaining walls are relative to the buildings and where they are relative to our easement and what is in the easement, I believe, area? And so, I was just wondering if you could get some detail around what, what's being impacted?
Sure, I can try to answer that if that's okay. So, first off, the shoring plans are still under review from this, by the city, so it's not final. Basically, it's the outline of Building 3, kind of that building footprint, is, is where the soil nails will project. The easements are also being revised currently. But what you're, the, the nails that we're looking at are the ones that will project into, and I can bring up my presentation again if that would help. One moment. I think I have a good slide here to show. All right, let me make this larger. So, the edges of this building, basically, when, this is going to be a planner's explanation of engineering, which may really shock Jimmy Tan listening, they're going to excavate a fairly large hole around this building footprint to accommodate the underground garage. And then in order to keep the sides of that hole up, they'll put piles into the ground and then soil nails will project this way. And this is the part of the city right of way that we're talking about.
Okay, and, and there is a water line that goes along that, that edge there on the right of that building. Is that correct? Is that correct?
I would have to look back at the utility plans, but I know that Public Works is closely reviewing this.
Yes, there is a water line as well as the storm drain line and sewer line within the area.
Okay. All right. And so my, my concern there is that it, it sounds like we're basically buying off on responsibility for those. And if sometime in the future we have to replace that infrastructure and remove those nails or interfere with those nails, do then we assume liability for any structural integrity for that, that construction that was done there? And that's, that's really the concern is that if, you know, by, you know, accepting the, the payment for these nails now, do we then incur future liability for any changes that might be made for our infrastructure in that area?
Jimmy, I'm not sure if you can answer that better than I can, but my understanding of the soil nail agreement is that basically there's an area in between the depth of the utilities and the surface that there will be soil nails placed into and they will be left there with no reason to remove them. And then the cost of the $1,000 per soil nail is to allow the city to have the funds to remove those soil nails so that they could modify or conduct maintenance on any infrastructure.
That's correct. And then if the, I think, Councilmember Salazar, you're doing your questioning regards to any future concerns with removing the soil nails to future, I guess, impacts to the, the walls is what I'm hearing. There wouldn't, it wouldn't be any impacts. You know, these soil nails, once the wall construct, wall for the garage is constructed, the soil nails are, I would say, not tensioned or anymore. So there's contractors who are working within the area can remove the soil nails without any issues.
Okay. Perfect. Okay. I think that covers it then. And then lastly, just one, one sort of suggestion. So this packet was a pretty large packet, two hundred and thirty-something pages. And I noticed that there was a large section in here that was, it was repeated. It was, I think, something like eighty pages that appeared in there twice. And I don't know if that was intentional or not. I know sometimes, you know, packets are brought in, in their entirety and then pasted in the middle of other documents and it tends to make them very big. You know, sometimes we're reading through these and things start seeming really repetitive and it turns out that we're reading the same report twice. I was just going to make a recommendation that perhaps in future packets, rather than embed all of these sort of support documents, that we merely provide links or a reference to these other documents and make those other documents available as standalone documents. I think it would serve two purposes. One, it would reduce the size of each individual package, so then they're easier for us to download and consume, they're easier for the public to download and consume. And it also puts these other documents out in a format where they're readily available should we need to reference them for something other than what's being discussed currently or just for historical reasons that we need to go back and access those. So just a request on how we might streamline this, this process.
Thank you. Casey, no other hands up? Some of the questions that I had had been answered, i.e., for example, the EIR, I think that has now been addressed. The, the liability aspect was also a question of mine, but I think Vice Mayor went into even more detail than I had thought. So I think, I appreciate the staff's response. So what I'm understanding though, too, is, you know, we have current process and an ordinance in place and on what's established and that's what's before us tonight is the DA and the resolution. So, you know, again, what, what a concern is, is that we're changing. And the art element of it, it goes before Culture and Arts Commission, which is appointed by council. It goes before the Planning Commission. Then it can also come up before the city council. So I think there's quite a few avenues in which it goes through to have that discussed about the art and where it's placed and what's accepted. And, and I think the city manager already said, we wanted a notification as far as the parking element, which is not as, it's not on the table at this point, then, then therefore that, that will be done. So is there any, without anything else, there is action on the item, there is a first reading. So is there any action on the waiving of the first reading?
I move you waive the first reading.
Is there a second? A second by Councilmember Medina to waive the first reading? And City Clerk, because I just want to make sure that each one of these is recorded, can you please take role on this?
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Mason?
Aye.
Councilmember Medina?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Salazar?
Aye.
Mayor Medina?
Aye. Second, thank you very much. The second item action is a introduction of the DA for the ordinance. Is there any action by council on that?
I move we approve the ordinance.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made by Vice Mayor, seconded by Councilmember Davis. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Mason?
Aye.
Councilmember Medina?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Salazar? Vice Mayor Salazar?
Aye. Aye.
And Mayor Medina?
Aye. Final action is to adopt the, the resolution on this item. Is there any action from council?
Motion to approve.
Motion made, is there a second?
Second.
There's a second by Councilmember Medina. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Mason?
Aye.
Councilmember Medina?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Salazar?
Aye.
And Mayor Medina?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you again. Thank you to staff and thank you to the business partners and to all the work that's been done is was articulated before and what was, is before this evening and appreciate everybody's efforts and work. With that, we'll move on to conduct of business, item seven.